2023 Special Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Feig, can you please take real call?
Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mill?
Here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter? Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the table by our solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller Superintendent, Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh White Director of Teaching and Learning, Diane Skorodovaki Director of Human Resources, and Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. We will not be amending the agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to Superintendent's report, Dr. Haller.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. As we enter into the month of August, this is typically when our seniors who left us, our graduating seniors of 2023 are preparing to especially go on to college. So I'd like to take this opportunity to wish all of our 2023 seniors good luck, as many of them are preparing right now to leave. We had a number of our students who earned academic scholarships and have been accepted into very competitive college programs, and we're very proud of them. But I'd also like to recognize our students who decided to enter the workforce in a time when many businesses are finally find are struggling to find loyal employees. And lastly, I'd like to thank our students who have made the great sacrifice to enter the military to protect and serve our country. So as we wish our seniors good luck, today we welcomed our new crop of kindergarten students, and we started with our new K students who are going to be at Lorraine, and they got to meet their future kindergarten teachers, and they signed on to be Exeter Eagles. Tomorrow, we welcome our J-WALL kindergartners, and next week, we welcome our OC kindergartners. So we're very excited to begin the new school year. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Education Committee, Dr. Battler.
You know, I just clicked on something, so that it won't let me see that for the moment, but... It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the Senior High School, Junior High School, Reifton School, and K through four elementary school handbooks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I wonder if maybe we could just get some detail about all the work that you guys have done and what we can expect to see for some of the changes.
Mr. Morgan, I would love to provide you with those details. So.
Labor of love.
Labor of love. Mrs. Breton, will you please come to the podium? Is he, oh, he's bringing you your computer. So while he's bringing you the computer, I'm going to talk a little bit about the changes that the handbook has undergone this year. And I want to take you back to some of the previous conversations around the handbook over the last couple of years. It was sorely in need of an update, both in format and in content and in consistency across all of the buildings. So true to form with this administrative team, we elected to use a collaborative approach approach to developing and building the handbook for this upcoming year. And so the way we worked through that process was we had a bunch of summer work sessions scheduled for the administrative team on a variety of topics. One of them was the handbook. And we first tasked the high school with developing a draft of their handbook, because as you could understand, the high school handbook is the most comprehensive and contains the most amount of content. So they brought their draft to our work session, and we systematically, as an entire admin team, worked through that draft and spent time discussing a lot of the things that were in there, including hot topic items like dress code and discipline and code of conduct. And once we were all satisfied and came to consensus on the content of the senior high handbook, then we made copies of that for each of the buildings. So essentially, each of the building's handbook is now sort of a abbreviated version or more customized version of what was the senior high handbook. So they're all consistent in format, in the way things are arranged, in the order in which you can find topics in the handbook, et cetera. And then we went through the process in each of those copies of taking things out that didn't apply at that level. For example, use of locker rooms wouldn't apply at the elementary level. So pulling out content like that or working papers at Reifton, obviously, things that don't apply, took that content out, and then the team went forward and added content in that might be specific to their level. For example, content about recess at the elementary level. And then through that process, we had our rough drafts for each building. And that's when Jen Breton comes into the picture. So if we've said it once, we've said it a million times. Jen is phenomenal at listening to us and taking these ideas that we share out loud verbally and create these really rough drafts of that look like, ugh, you know, so plain Jane and not a lot of pizzazz and not a lot of like user friendliness to them. And she turns them into something that people want to look at and people want to access and that people can access in a user friendly way. And so from there, Jen spent time with Kristi and I developing this concept for what the handbooks look like now, which is really a flip book type of format with an ADA accessible version on the website for those who are not able to access that flip book. And so the team is really proud of the work that they did on this because it created consistency for our families, K through 12, in that no matter what building your child is in, you're going to be able to go to the handbook and navigate it successfully because they're all built the same. And so we were really happy to do that for our families and for our students. We're also really happy to do this for Dr. Hamburger, because as an administrative team, we agreed that this was a great parting gift for him, given that he's going to be leaving the board in December. So, Dr. Hamburger, here is our handbook.
I feel like we should be set to music.
I know. I feel like there should be music playing in the background.
I could do that, if you mean.
Jen, do you just, Jen, do you want to give them a little preview of what it looks like?
So this is a senior high handbook, and thank you very much for that, Dawn. I almost feel like I should cry after that introduction. But we start off with the table of contents. All of these are linkable, so if you don't want to scroll to Student Services, you can click on it, and it'll take you right to that particular section, which you can see right over here. So, and just as Dawn said, we'll provide a PDF of this online as well. So if you do want to download a hard copy, you can do so and search through it. But it's, you know, handbooks are only so exciting, but hopefully this is a little bit prettier to look at than a 40-page type document, so. And there's a lot of active links in there that will take people to either board policy and/or various places on our website to fill out forms or whatever it may be, so.
Two things that I forgot to mention. Jen pulled out the athletic handbook and made it its own separate handbook, so it now lives separately. There's a link to it in the main handbooks. We felt like it was a little congested being in the main handbook, so we wanted to stand out on its own. The other piece is, we had a portion of this that was standing on its own for many years that didn't make sense, which was the student code of conduct. There's no requirement to have your student code of conduct stand as a separate document outside of your handbook. As a matter of fact, it didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense when we talked about it as a team. It makes much more sense for that to be embedded in the main document that students and families are accessing, which is the handbook. So you'll see as you go through the handbook, in the introduction, we reference the student code of conduct and school code as it pertains to that, and then you'll see that verbiage repeated throughout relevant sections of the handbook, like some of the policy sections and the disciplines section.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you again. I mean, it's really a beautiful, it's a beautiful document, but it also really satisfies all the concerns that I think we had in previous years, which was that a lot of the policies that we have reference the fact that the policy, a specific policy should be published in a student handbook, and so many times it was missing over the years. So I think, I think Dawn and the team, the administrative team, have just done a really fantastic job and not only doing it in a way that's, I mean, it's just not just a bunch of words on a page. It actually comes to life, particularly with all of the hyperlinks that allow you to kind of dig right into the policy if necessary. So I know that's a lot of work. I was really astounded when I read, when I went through it, and I did go through the various documents, and I just want to say once again, I know it's a lot of work, but you put the time in and it's an investment, because, you know, future years, you won't really have to worry so much about the handbook. Every year was like, you were going through the handbook and finding things that had to be adapted and changed. This way, we'll change our policy, the hyperlink will change, and it'll work out perfectly. So again, thanks so much for the parting gift. Appreciate it. Yep, thank you, team.
Dr. Haller, you had expressed some reservations on the dress code. Does this meet your approval?
Our team had a lively debate about the dress code. We did, we did a great deal of research, pulling different school districts' dress codes, not just from Berks County, but from Chester County, Montgomery County, Bucks County. And I believe that we captured a dress code that is appropriate at this time for our students, and we want to make sure that we are respectful of our students and allow for expression, but also make sure that there is a certain level of respect when students enter our building.
Okay. If no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That's all for my committee.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Just before I go to the next one, I was in autopilot, and I forgot to mention that no one signed up for public comment. So we'll now move on to Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following resignations under Administrative Staff Number One, Certified Staff One through Five, Support Staff One, Extracurricular Staff One and Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following requests for retirement under Support Staff Numbers One and Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Ms. Ensman for her 17 years of service at the junior high school and Mr. Cole for his 27 years of service at the junior high school.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, under Appointments, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments. And just a note here, all appointments are contingent upon receipt at the district approval of all necessary pre-employment forms, certifications, state mandate physical examinations, and clearances. Under Certified Staff One through Six, Support Staff One, Extracurricular Staff One through Seven, Summer Work One through Three, and Mentor List Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following request for leave of absence under D-Leave of Absence Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following request for change of status under Section E, Change of Status, Certified Staff One through Six, Support Staff One through Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the attached list of course requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, before I conclude, I do believe that we have some new teammates in our audience, and we would just like to wish them well and welcome to Exeter. Thanks for being here.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Finance, Facilities, and Audit, Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. I just have one item. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors adopt the resolution to appoint a liaison between Exeter Township School District and Berchheimer for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mill. We do not have anyone signed up for public comments, so there's no objection. This special voting meeting is adjourned. And we'll now begin our Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 Committee of a Whole Meeting. Mr. Feig, can you please take real call?
Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mill?
Here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter?
Here.
Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding the meeting minutes for the July 11th Board Voting Meeting? No? Okay. We will not be amending tonight's agenda, so we'll move on to Education. Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following list of staff conferences. Does anybody have any questions? No? Moving on. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached affiliation agreement for the Senior High School Internship Program with the Redding Hospital for the 2023-24 school year. It is attached. No questions regarding that? Oh, moving on to C. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a memorandum of understanding between the Berks County Intermediate Unit and the Exeter Township School District to coordinate the efforts between the BCIU's Head Start Program and Exeter's Title Programs. And that one, I actually had a question on. Does this in any way detract from or add to what we do at Owatonna Creek? Sorry, Josh.
No, that's okay. This is a requirement for federal programs for us to just have this agreement as a way to coordinate effort. So it's more of just a rubber stamp approval thing than anything for federal programs, so no effect on anything.
All right.
Thank you for your question, though.
Thank you, Dr. White. Letter D, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve an agreement between Aviana Healthcare and Exeter Township School District to provide healthcare services to the students on behalf of the school in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement for the period July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, at a cost as per the attached schedule. Moving on to E. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a settlement agreement and release between the parents individually and on their, on their behalf and on the behalf of their minor child, student number 8582324, as proposed and further authorizes the Board President and Board Secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district. Okay. Hearing no comments, it is recommended that A through E is sent to the voting meeting. Thank you.
All right. Finance, Facilities, and Audit Committee, Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. First item I'd may is for an update on the capital projects. And, Mr. Feig, I believe we have somebody from Quandell that will...
Sherry, John, you want to take the podium? And do they give you a clicker? Okay. Sheldon, can you pull up the...
Good evening. It's great to be in front of you again today. By way of introduction, again, my name is Sherry Laura Sevage. I'm Director of Business Development for Quandell Energy Solutions. So about a year ago, I stood in front of you and presented a project that is being done at the junior high school this year. So part of the presentation today is to update you on the status of that project as it's being, you know, beginning to wrap up. Secondly, we wanted to update everyone and kind of let you know where we are with development for the capital projects for the 2024 season. As you remember, probably, I'm going to say fall of last year, we went around the district and did a very high-level look at what the KCBA report had shown as far as capital projects and future projects. Again, that was pretty high-level, but we did do budget estimates. So since that time now, we've been working with the district and going through the report itself and kind of putting some definition around what that actual scope looks like to get to the point where we're going to present the whole project scope and budget to you. We're not at the point where we're going to be talking budget tonight, but we wanted to let you know where we stand with project development. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Hayden. He's our Director of Engineering, and he's going to walk you through all the details.
Hey, John, one quick question. Junior High Project will be wrapped up so we can open the school, right?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
So we wanted to just throw this in. Everything we're working on developing is really towards the, supporting the mission and vision of the school. So the facilities are an important part of, they provide the container for what is happening between teachers and students, extracurricular activities, sports programs, et cetera. So... There we go. So very briefly, we want to cover, sort of at a high level, what is going on in the junior high school this summer. We were replacing one of the two boilers that are there with a high-efficiency condensing boiler. So that is in place. It's being piped up now. Even if that isn't quite finished, it's still summer, but we're pretty sure that'll be started up in the next few weeks. The controls upgrade is the second piece. This is sort of a process of getting the controls. I'll probably use this, come back to this, but this cell phone ages relatively quickly. If it's 10 years old, it's not going to be supported. Building temperature control systems follow the same kind of aging process. It's not just one unit, though. It's in all parts of all schools, so they require maintenance. And they also get old. The software no longer is supported. Some of the equipment and controllers become outdated. Parts are no longer available. So that's happened in the junior high school, so that, all the controls are being updated this summer. And then most of the equipment in the classrooms, the air handlers that serve the cafeteria, gym, auditorium, a few other places, and the fan coils, those have all been refurbished and cleaned. So even though the equipment is around 20 years old, to the extent possible, it'll be in a like-new condition. So it will be in good shape going forward, affording continued proper maintenance. A surprise for us is we applied for a number of rebates and in this discussion with First Energy, MedEd, the... A few more rebates than we anticipated, so as we went through the scope of work, they said, oh, well, this is also eligible, and here's a new program since last summer when we first developed this project. So, and UGI also looks for efficient boiler installations and helps to fund those. So at this point, we're still in the application process, but we believe a little over $126,000 will be returned back to the school district as a result of the rebates. So that's, that's some additional news there. So moving to...
Can I stop there real quick, Brian? Can we go back one slide? So Brian, was, this was not under the loan, right? This is under the capital budget, the maintenance? Or is this under our loan that we're considering taking out?
This, the project at the junior high is under a loan we're considering taking out. Right now, we're using the existing capital reserves, and you did a reimbursement resolution that when you take out that loan, it'll replenish the capital reserve account.
And this was all part of that, that junior high?
We did not expect to get rebates, so unless I know, you know, 75% sure I'm going to get it, I didn't budget for that. So this is additional money that we...
Total project, total project was slated as, what, 3.4 million, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
And plus, we also used 200,000 or 300,000 for the tennis courts. That will be...
So we will just have to replace a little bit less than we thought with the loans.
Well, actually, you could, you have a little bit more in your capital reserve, or you can use that for future projects. Yep.
So we're now into a forward-looking part of the program here. So we have projects that are touching most of the buildings, not all, but most of the buildings in the school district. And so to break this down, we have put each of the categories of projects that we're developing for each, each building. And hopefully, some of the photos are, help to illustrate some of the conditions. So at Jacksonwald Elementary School, there's building envelope work, and most of that is, deals with masonry. The entire building does not look like that photo, just want to be very clear, but there are certain areas where the, there's been moisture penetration of the brick, and there's freeze thaw, and this can be a result of that. So there are a couple of isolated areas that are in this condition. There are a smaller number of areas that have minor repointing needs. And I'll just say, most buildings, because this will be a recurring theme, where building joints come together, there's usually a caulk joint there. The caulking ages either by sunlight or time and becomes brittle and sometimes can crack or eventually will. So a lot of the work in many of the buildings where we have masonry scope is actually simply doing some of the caulking. This is, has the most masonry work of the buildings in the district. This building also has an older diesel-fueled generator, so in the lower right-hand corner, you see the generator inside, and the photo adjacent to it is the radiator on the roof. We'll be replacing those, removing those pieces of equipment and installing a new generator. It'll be a gas-fired generator, which will eliminate the need for diesel fuel in that building. To that end, we will remove the underground fuel oil tank. The generator will support all the same items that are there. We've, will add four outlets for, one in the nursing suite and a few in the administrative offices, for refrigerator, for prescription insulin, that sort of thing. And then for any kind of charging that might be needed. And we will also put a boiler and a hot water pump on the emergency generator as well. The plumbing in general, we're going to be updating toilets in, throughout the building. The junior high school, we are doing work there mostly on the HVAC and control system today, but the work next summer will be more on various spaces. So the auditorium is in need of an upgrade. There's a list there of this, starting kind of on the down, you know, at the bottom and going up, we'll be replacing the floor tile, auditorium seating. There are two large group instructional areas that are not functional today. We'll be replacing the partitioning so that those large group instructional spaces can be used again in the future. When the partitioning is open, you have a large six, seven-hundred-seat auditorium. When those are closed, you have three areas, the auditorium seating area, and then the two large group instructional areas. We'll, the stage flooring is not in terrible condition, but by putting an overlayment on the flooring as either musicals, other things that are using sets can attach to the floor. If that overlayment becomes damaged in the future, it doesn't, you can take screws out and lay down a new, new sheet without major effort. The theater technology, so lighting, sound, and any rigging will also be upgraded, and that'll be part of the, you know, current technology from an educational purpose. Yes, it's a middle school, and that perspective is appreciated. We'll sort of have a reprise of this discussion for the high school when we get there. There are some architectural enhancements, including updating the lobby, and that will also include updating the restrooms and making them ADA compliant.
Can we stop there for a second?
Yes.
So restore large group instruction rooms. I assume those are the walls that slide out?
That's correct.
So in every tour that we've done in every building, we've been told that every one of those was a bad investment because they've all broken, and now we're looking at replacing them to making them permanent. So I'm just curious why we are considering putting those walls back in if we've had nothing but trouble with them in the past.
So that was just actually at Awatton Creek. Those are, it's a little bit different. Those rooms that were designed that way were to be used as large instructional places, instruction areas. And those walls are a little bit different. They're heavier, and they're coming off the track. The walls that, they're not walls that would be at the junior high. They, they are more, yeah, kind of more flexible. So it's a, it's a different, I guess, say, product, would you say, that will be, that would be used? So, but thank you for the question and asking that.
Yeah, so it's not like on an electric track or anything? These are just like sliding?
They, they would be automate, I mean, there is a key and a motorized, they're very heavy, so it not, it would not be panels that you would move in and out. They would be motorized systems. So they, they will require maintenance, but they are robust.
Okay.
It's, but it's different than what's at Awatton. Like, you can see at Awatton, those are actually coming off the track.
So we, we shouldn't expect to see having to replace this in a couple of years, then?
I would think no.
No. The, these are forty, fifty-year with maintenance along the way.
Thank you.
I know what he says with maintenance. You have to use them. You can't let them sit for ten years and expect the tracks not to be filled with dirt or something.
Yeah, that's correct.
You have to keep the tracks clean.
And we'll reprise the Awatton discussion because we'll come to that topic, and we have some photographs that show some of the details there. So in addition to the auditorium, we'll be converting the wood shop into the new wrestling room. We'll be removing the mats from the current wrestling room, which is downstairs and the lowest level, and turn that into storage. The main office will be adding egress and access to a conference room. We'll be upgrading the classroom doors, and in the cafeteria, some modifications, we'll be adding an AV screen, which essentially you'd be able to project onto it. We'll replace the storage cage with a wall and double doors, and we'll add new ceilings and lights, so it'll, it'll brighten up the place. The, the school district will come behind and repaint the wall areas.
I have a question about the, the wood shop to wrestling room. Is that because we're not offering wood shop anymore?
We haven't offered wood shop in a long time, and our wrestling room's in a basement that I can touch the ceiling.
Yeah, I knew that was like an issue.
And I mean, we, we looked at making new entrances and egress, you know, for the basement, and humidity control was, it actually is probably cheaper to make the wood shop into the wrestling room. Right now, the wood shop's basically stuffed with storage materials, and we can store everything downstairs.
Is the wood shop in the main section, or is it back in the left-hand corner on the basement floor?
It's down the steps. It actually has a door that goes out to the back.
Okay.
So you have, you can actually, if they had wrestling practice at night or on weekends, you can actually have access coming in the back of the building instead of through the main building. The other half of that wood shop was, I think, a metal shop, which we converted to a stem room, which I would say.
That's what I was thinking, that has steps going down into it in the main part of the building?
It actually comes out, it's, steps go down the hallway, but you go straight in. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I, just want to clarify a couple of things here, too. On the sheet that was attached in the agenda, it mentions added scope next to the new screen, which I'm assuming is that new AV screen mentioned in the cafeteria there, and then also the classroom door upgrades. Is that, are we saying that was not a part of the original set of work that we had Quandell looking for? It was added later?
Let's, let's see. The screen wasn't an original part, but when we went through the building and when we were doing the cages, you know, we, you know, have you been in the cafeteria? It has this huge cage, and you know, figured we should put a wall there.
And, and it's for supplies, not for kids, just to clarify.
If we can have a dropdown screen because they can't show films or whatever in the cafeteria, so that's why that was added. The doors, I think we had under a different area, but we moved it just to regular because they're old doors. They could fall apart with the new HVAC system. The old system had those louvered doors, the wooden louvers, which are very flimsy. But that was for air circulation. Now the, the units and everything have been redone. We don't need those louvers, and we'd rather have solid security doors like we have in other, every other building.
But just to go back to your question, there were things that, since Quandell's gone through, that have been discovered, and the cafeteria was part of the discussion that we had today with them when we started going through the project. And if you've been in that junior high cafeteria lately, you'll notice that the, the ceiling is, is very, very yellow at this point and hasn't been replaced in it in a very long time. And there's lights that also do not work and probably will not be able to be replaced because of the way they, they almost look like skylights. So it, it would be best to do that work now while you're putting in the screen than to try and go back and do that because it is something that does need to be done and was not part of the original KCBA because that report, because that report was done in two thousand twenty-sixteen, so.
Yeah, and when we, we walked through it, we actually, I think the comment was, the floor's wider than the ceiling. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So additional work at the junior high, we have some envelope work with, again, masonry. Most of that is the odd place where some repointing is needed, but mostly the expansion joints. Plumbing is, there's some leaks that are in, in one column of risers of gang bathrooms, so we've identified what the issue is with the help of the staff, and we'll rectify that. On the ADA side, there's a chair, a wheelchair lift that will add to the stage area to be able to meet ADA requirements. And then the part of the lobby renovation will include the toilets that are in that area. Those will be updated to meet ADA requirements. The new wrestling area will also have two single-person toilet rooms added, so there'll be some additional facilities with that.
And I, I want to add about the wrestling room. This past year, we had to bus the kids over to LASH for junior high wrestling. You know, if we redo the wrestling room there, we won't, won't save that expensive transporting back and forth. Plus, I think we're going to have two teams this year, a girls' team and a boy team instead of the mine, so.
So for this building, there's pretty much a minor masonry work that we'll attend to. Lorraine, there's some masonry work. Again, it's fairly minor. There's some caulking. The plumbing, let's see, the original building, yeah, we're going to update toilets essentially that are needing to be replaced, and we'll be adding a chairlift to the stage there. The maintenance garage is a building that has a variety of needs. The envelope, this is probably, it's a small building, but probably in terms of the list of activities is, has a lot going on. We'll insulate some of the office walls on the second floor, the upper floor. You can see the windows in the photographs at the upper level. Those will be replaced, and there are garage doors or bay doors. At the lower level, you can see one, and then at the upper level, I believe there are two, maybe three. Those will be replaced. Those are damaged and not working all that well. We'll replace the roof, and in the lower level, there are plumbing fixtures that need to be replaced. And these, this is going to be mostly for coach, coach use. It's not intended for public use. There are other facilities for that.
That, that lower levels where our trainers take care of our injured players and stuff, so you know, the only toilets down there right now are the outside porta-potties. So at least they'd have something to be able to wash their hands.
Brian, was this the building that needs a total tear-down of the roof?
Yeah, this was the one that has the new roof to be put in. It's a flat ADM, yeah.
And this is, this is the one that, is the, is the roof leaking right now? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And is, is, is this on an expedited list, or is this something that, what's the timeframe for that?
We're talking next summer. I mean, it's, it's not going to cave in. It's a solid building, but it's a flat roof, and we keep our equipment and things in there. It's more trying to get down below that, it's not seeping through the, the upper level down to the lower level. I think the half of the lower levels, is it the band concession or one of the concession stands are down there?
And what if we were to have a really, I don't want to say the word, Dr. Heller, but a really heavy winter? I mean, is that, I mean, I guess, I guess my concern is i- if this needs to be done.
There, there's steel trusses. It's not going to cave through, but yeah, we're going to probably have more leaking than not.
And, and is there a reason that we couldn't expedite this to get it done before next summer?
This could be done over the winter. This could be done in the fall. It's, you know, whenever you want to put the money towards it.
I mean, my, my thought as to the board is that if this, if the roof is truly indissipated to the point that it's causing damage inside the building, then it should be kind of prioritized to the front of the list.
And there's no student use other than athletic training?
Maintenance equipment, you know, we will work on our pickup trucks, put our plows on, you know, change oil, things like that in there. But a lot of it's cornered or pickup trucks with the salt spreaders in the back, so they're ready for the, you know, snowstorm the next day. Steve, are you back there? Can you, the roof of the maintenance garage? How bad?
Uh, we've had three vendors look at it, and each of them is recommend for replacement. It leaks around the windows, it leaks around the corners, it leaks in the seams. It's original construction material, so it should be done. I haven't really had pricing set up yet, but.
What, what is, can the administration explain what are the offices used for in there?
The employees that changed clock in, clock out, basically changing to their, their work stuff.
For. So this is mainly buildings and grounds?
Yes.
Okay. Would there be any interruptions to the staff or anything by doing it during the school year?
No, truthfully, we could probably move them into the basement here. It'd be tight, but you know, it'd be a longer distance for them to travel back because most of the work's done on that side of the creek.
What about, what about the parking lot for the high school?
No, because they, they actually have, they can park trucks in front of it, so that, they wouldn't be taking up any of the parking lot. The only problem is I wouldn't want to do it during football season because we lose the concession in the bottom area down below there, and we need that bottom area for trainers to work out of.
I, I was just wondering, was there a reason why we were slating it for summer? Was it just because of convenience and not interrupting?
Weather and convenience.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I defer.
Yeah. Yeah, I trust your judgment, but I also, I don't want to see, I don't want to see equipment get destroyed. I don't want to have to replace grass seed, replace fertilizer. We have employees that are there. If it's creating a hazard, if, you know, I don't know if there's anything happening with humidity or moisture as a result inside the building. And I certainly would defer to you guys as well, but if it's something that needs to be done, and it's going to wind up costing us more down the line if we damage something inside the building, and there's no students that it's going to cause a disruption to, I don't know why we wouldn't speed it up if we're already budgeting for. if we're already budgeting for, for the expense either way.
I, I can address something with the schedule of the project. We actually, I'll, I'd like to come back to that towards the end of the presentation. We have some schedule items and, uh, uh, the high level summary is if this project is approved, there are elements that we can move ahead with where there aren't, uh, impacts for students. Um, and we'd be very interested in doing that, uh, to a lot of work. We're calling this the summer project, but not all elements would have to be in the summer. So to your point, uh, some, some of these items in this building might be a good example to advance, uh, fairly quickly. Yes, here we are. Okay, so, uh, this is the more colorful part of the presentation. That is not a Rorschach test. That is actually a digital scan of a part of the area of the Watten Creek. There is, uh, the photograph sort of at the top that looks like a window and then, uh, the one just below it, which is a sort of a close-up of the window. Um, that window, the bottom of the window is slightly below grade. So when it rains, um, in that, that lower picture of the window, um, water will puddle there and then water will seep underneath the window and into the building. That doesn't happen with every rain, but generally if it's a heavy rain, that, that does occur. So the question we had is why does that happen? And the answer is that the grading, uh, either wasn't right or has, uh, things can shift when you mow, grass settles down, grades can change. But what that, uh, color, uh, diagram is essentially if you think of the colors as a to- top, uh, a topological map, uh, blue to blue is one foot of change of elevation, red to red is a foot, yellow to yellow is a foot. So to orient you, the thing that looks sort of like an eyeball is an area drain. And that is the low, uh, spot in the area, um, uh, in the immediate area. So the photograph with the window that's sort of looking into the distance, the area drain is to the right. Sort of if you follow the line of the shadow, you can't see it, uh, area drain, but it's sort of in the direction of the line of the shadow of the building. And it may be hard to see, it is for me from here, but there is a, it's very level right near the building. So that photograph or that color, uh, chart has, uh, white parts, uh, to the, on the left side. The bump out is where that window is in the photograph. So you can see that it's sort of a green, light green area, that's very level. And again, from blue to blue is a foot drop, there's very little slope in that area. So the water gathers and, uh, our solution will be to regrade that area. And we'll have an understanding of what is involved with that in the next couple of days. But that's existing conditions there. So we'll, we're pretty confident we'll be able to address that. Uh, the Siemens control system in the building is, uh, original to the building and I pull out my cell phone, again, an older, older system, uh, parts are, uh, becoming less available. So that's gonna be upgraded to match the rest of the school district's, uh, control, uh, which is Johnson Controls. Um, and then this is where the partition discussion that was talked about earlier applies. So the pictures, the three pictures at the bottom are photographs of the partitioning in place on the left and the right and the one in the center, it's with the partition open. So those partitions will be permanently demounted and, uh, new walls will be put in place, uh, permanent walls where the partitions were. And that will also solve some issues with noise transmission from the corridors into the classrooms. I think there are three classrooms where the interior, uh, movable petitions will remain. And I think this is six classrooms where this work would, uh, would occur. Or maybe it's six pairs of classrooms. Okay. Let's go back one. Reifton, uh, this is a, Michael Watten Creek is a geothermal heat pump building. Uh, this is about twenty years old. Um, there's minor masonry work to do. The HVAC system, there's a long list of things there, but it's, the, the basic goal is to replace the war source heat pump equipment inside the building and, uh, refurbish the ventilation uh, equipment that's up in the attic. And then, uh, just attend to some of the other details in the geothermal heat pump system. There are a number of exhaust fans serving the kitchen and general exhaust, uh, that will be replaced and the kitchen makeup area unit will also be replaced. Additional work, let's see if this will go. There's a water heater that is in the process of failing, it's condensing, it should not be. The photo there is, uh, one of two emergency access roads, which has had some erosion and may or may not be visible, but there are, it's sort of a plastic, uh, substructure that allows the area to be pervia- imp- pervious, as I say, when it rains, water can flow through, but it provides some structure so an emergency vehicle or other maintenance vehicle could, could drive on it like a fire truck. So that access road needs to be, uh, restored, so we'll be doing that. And then, um, there's some gaps in the sidewalks, which we actually may, uh, the, uh, business manager may say, we'll do that ourselves, that may come out of this project, but at the moment it's in. Uh, this is the last school, um, in the list. There are areas in the, uh, stairwells and on the, a couple of ramps in the corridors that the, uh, treads are, uh, wearing quite, quite a bit, so those will be, uh, removed and replaced. Um, on the envelope, again, there's some, uh, local areas that need to be addressed, uh, mainly, uh, expansion joints. Um, on the HVAC system, uh, we'll upgrade the Johnson Control System. This looks like a fairly short list, but there's a, um, a lot of work to do in this building with the HVAC system. The, some of the equipment is from nineteen ninety-two and some of the equipment is from, uh, two thousand and four. And I think the cafeteria addition was two thousand and five or six. So that's, that's the age of the equipment. All the air handlers, similar to what we're doing in the junior high school this summer, will be refurbished. Some of the unit ventilators, uh, are, uh, from before nineteen ninety-two, those are going to be replaced. And we're still investigating a little bit whether it's, we should advise replacing thirty-year-old unit ventilators in the balance of the high school or refurbish them. There's some, um, financial, significant financial, uh, aspects to replace them. There's a lot more cost there, but then you have a thirty, forty-year life or more, uh, that's, that's starting with replacement. If we keep, uh, thirty-year-old equipment, um, it seems as though we would, uh, think a ten, ten to fifteen-year lifecycle and then the big work would need to happen down the road. So we're still thinking about that. So that's, that's, uh, stay tuned there. Exhaust fans will be upgraded for the locker room and, uh, I think the rest I've covered there. In the, uh, so here's another one of these pictures in the upper right-hand corner. There, there's sort of another, it's a green eye this time, that is the area drain, that's the low and the, uh, the stripes, blue to blue, red to red is one inch in this case. So what is the problem? If you walk towards the cafeteria, uh, the picture that's to the left of the, um, of the, uh, colored, stripey, uh, topol- topographical, uh, uh, diagram, uh, is walking towards the cafeteria. And it turns out that, uh, if, um, trying to figure out the best way to describe this, there's sort of a lower left-hand corner of that diagram that is rectangular and different in terms of color and pattern than the other, that's inside the cafeteria. Everything that is colored and stripey is the paver area, the outside, uh, where you can walk. As we're looking at the photograph, all the way, uh, at the farthest point where you would enter the cafeteria is the bottom of the colored diagram there. And as you can see, the, the very distinctive striping ends and you get sort of a modeling, what does that mean, that that's essentially flat? There's less than an inch across about a twenty-five to thirty-foot area. So what's the problem, which I didn't start with, is it, it's similar to the other place, uh, water collects there and it goes into the cafeteria. I should have started with that. Instead of keeping you in suspense is, this is all very nice, but why are we doing this? So that's why. Uh, so we'll be, um, uh, adjusting the height of the pavers and to create a slope towards the drain. I could have just said that and ended, you know, not going on for five minutes, but, um, maybe next time. Uh, so, uh, there is an underground, uh, tank, um, we'll be removing that. And the audio, auditorium, uh, even though it's fine print down at the bottom, what we're planning to do there is, uh, upgrade curtains, rigging, sound and lighting, so that'll be the theater technology portion. The overlayment of the stage, similar to the junior high school, it'll be a similar type of approach here. And then the auditorium floor, uh, and carpet will be replaced. For those who've been in that auditorium, you'll notice that there are seats on top of the tile floor, so the, all the seating will be removed and the tile floor will be replaced and the seating, seating will be put back in. Let's see, I think there's a part two. No, there's not. I will say.
What is that, what is that, what is the material of the stage overlay?
That's a great question. The architect has said what it is, um, um, and I'm not gonna remember exactly the material.
Is that something that's commonly done in, in school districts when the stages need replaced?
Yes.
Because I just know those floors get abused.
Yeah, that, and, and that's, uh, so what's nice is about, uh, uh, a little less than a half an inch, probably three of an inch thick, uh, material, it's a very dense, uh, uh, it's, I think it's like a cement board, but that's not exactly the right, uh, terminology. But it can be used to attach, uh, stage elements to and as it gets damaged over time from that, it is a screwed-down material, so the screws can be backed out and that material can be lifted out. It's not unlike the concept of carpet squares, um, you know, in terms of maintenance and replacement, so it'll.
So how much excess do we buy so that this way, in six years, somebody doesn't come back to us and say, "Well, they don't make that material anymore and now we have to replace the whole floor again"?
Um, it, that's, I will take that under advisement. I don't, this material's been around quite a long time. Um, it's not like a new experimental thing that's just been rolled out. But your point of having an attic stock is well taken, so we'll include, um, some percentage, twenty percent, thirty percent at both, uh, the junior high school and the senior high school. We'll talk to, uh, Mr. Biggerstaff about the place to store all that, but we'll come up with a, sort of an attic stock surplus.
Yeah, I feel like, um, it's been around for a long time, it's very subjective because I feel like every time we talk about things, all, you know, we often hear, "Well, we can't get parts for that anymore, uh, and we're gonna have to replace this now." So, I mean, if it's something, it seems like this is a system where it can be pulled up and laid back down again. It would seem that having, you know, enough overstock for, you know, foreseeable future would make more sense than us being in a situation where a long time wasn't as long as we thought.
No, it's a very, very good advice.
Yeah, is that what it's made to do though, like you could cut out a chunk and put a new piece in?
Uh, you wouldn't cut it out, it's actually a four by eight, it's like a plywood, it's not plywood, but it's, it's those, it's that size, a four by eight sheet, it's, it's regular, um, and you would, it's, it's gonna be screwed down and you just back the screws out, sort of similar to a drywall screw or that sort of thing, you would back that out, put the new piece in and screw it back down.
My other question is about the masonry. Does this include anything with the outside stairways at the high school, like coming down from the parking lot? Is that included in that?
All, all the exterior masonry, you know, there, there's, right now we haven't, I, I think you figured twenty percent, which I think is high, but there's, you know, every thirty or forty feet, there's an expansion joint, that's where the caulk is, that has to definitely be replaced because that stuff's drying out. There's also portions where you can see the bricks are starting to, the, uh, cement's crumbling or, uh, a good example, we just did, uh, power washed, uh, Jackson wall and you can see spots where the white's coming down the wall, that means there's infiltration in the, the joints. So those joints will have to be chipped out and re, repointed.
Okay, so, but it does include basically like?
Right, and I think in the high school, we also had in there, um, probably relaying the, uh, pavers by the stadium, but we have to look at that further, you know. Problem is, pay, just like outside the cafeteria, pavers move, you know, especially if freezing it all every year.
You talked of, uh, removing the underground tanks at both Jackson wall then, uh, here and I've waited till here, but, uh, is that the only, is there any other way to stabilize it that might be less expensive than the project digging up and removing it?
It, I think there's, um, questions about if there's been any sort of leakage, uh, from the tank at some time in the past. I don't believe these tanks are being used at this time, so by pulling the tanks out, you can test and make sure.
They would go get in trouble with EPA, right?
Yeah, somebody, yeah. Maybe, it might be the state.
By the way, just because it's old, there's still parts available for old things.
Yeah, the high school.
Sometimes an enhancement.
The high school tank, I think, was the old heating oil tank when you used to switch between gas and, and heating oil, you know, in the day, they, they told you to keep your heating oil just in case it had to switch back. The Jackson wall tank, I think that was strictly for the, um, generator.
Previous generation of the boilers were dual fuel.
Okay.
Yep. Today, today it's gas only for the boilers.
Okay.
Yep.
Brian, I have a question about, um, the junior high has some, um, at least from what I can recall, some deteriorated concrete down by the auditorium. Was that, has that been addressed or will that be addressed at some point? Because I don't see it in this plan.
Are you talking, uh, pavements?
Pavement, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, we're addressing that. I know we also, I don't know if everyone noticed, last year we put a sidewalk between the junior high and Reifton, so we have a full sidewalk there and we're, we're tacking that each year through our maintenance budget for sidewalk repairs.
Yeah, okay, because I, I saw the sidewalk.
That's, that's why I said I might take out the, the cracks, the, the gaps at Reifton because we have money set aside, as long as the board keeps on budgeting that money in the future years to do those type of maintenance, because sidewalks normally don't last.
Okay.
Capital.
All right.
Expense-wise, you know.
Yeah, I mean, just, I, I just don't want it to be overlooked, like, because there's so many projects going on here, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's some sidewalks there, there's also some curves that have to be repaired.
Yeah.
That were chipped off and stuff.
Thank you.
Let's see, oh, I'm going the wrong way, I'm sorry. Okay. We'll come back to tax credits maybe, so.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, the original plan that we saw also had stadium upgrades. I did not see this in that plan, is that, is the district deciding not to go with that at this time?
Well, the, the stadium upgrades, I think that they had an original plan, I pulled out into our maintenance cycle because it was replacing bleachers and things that I, I don't think they're gonna, they might have to be replaced in another fifteen years. I don't see a, a long fifteen-plus-year lifecycle and I can't see borrowing long-term to fix something. to fix something that's going to be less than the, the terminal loan.
Is that the same for the turf as well? Wasn't the turf in that plan?
Well, it's, well, it's not in here, but we still have seven hundred thousand sitting in the, the capital projects-
Okay.
Plan, but, you know, either replacing the turf, because I figure we have at least five or six years depending on, you know, if we, we add chrome or, or, or not. But right now, the compression testing's fine, so I know we have at least five years of turf. There was question, you know, do we keep that seven hundred thousand in or do, you know, I think there, there was an ask for a second turf practice field, but, you know, do either or, I don't know. It's not up to me. I think we need to take care of the buildings first.
So a little bit about the proposed timeline from, oh, I'm sorry.
Just that, because we feel like we've been talking about this forever, not as much as the solar project, but, um, when we looked at the, the original KCBA report, we listed everything and then we started going through literally line by line and breaking down what would be appropriate for the capital projects and then what would be appropriate for being part of a maintenance cycle. So there, this is really scaled down from what was originally shown to you. If you go back to board meetings before and the attachments that you had, that these are solely just the capital projects that are being presented to you at these, at this time. And it's like the need-to-be-done things. We just met with John this morning and, and reviewed these again in anticipation of this, of this meeting. So if it's something that needs immediate attention, that's what you're seeing. If it's something that Brian has looked at and believes that it, it, it can be part of the maintenance cycle, so you're not like paying it back as, as part of this, you know, borrowing of money, this large sum of money, then that's why he, you know, also did the debt restructuring to build into the budget for as long as the board will allow it, a good portion of, of funding, about what, five hundred thousand dollars?
Almost a half million a year.
Yeah, five hundred thousand dollars a year to keep up with maintenance that has been so sorely needed over, over the years.
Right.
You bring up a topic I was interested in, Dr. Haller. Brian, how does this list compare with the list of capital projects that we saw at our budget workshops last fall and into the winter and early spring? Are they the same with, are they the same with the exception of the ones that are marked-
Yeah.
Added?
Yeah, this, this is actually a compilation of the, the budget workshops. That's why we wanted to go through and, you know, let the public and the board see what we're actually talking about. You know, it, it's, yeah, I, I also want to, I keep on reiterating, it's not like they didn't do anything in the past. We, we've done the HVAC system at, at Jackson Wall, Lorraine HVAC system. We've been doing work on these buildings, but just not keeping up with the way they should have been.
Right.
You know, it's, it's almost reactionary instead of-
So this, this list is, is the current list of things we're going to do in, in the capital project area.
Yeah.
We shouldn't refer back to the list that we saw from between October and April.
This is what left and, and like somewhere, I don't even know where they did it. I think in the, the one thing we took off was bringing the fire extinguishers to ADA. That's been done since KCBA put that in in two thousand seventeen. I don't know when it was done, but it's been done.
Okay.
So there, there's things that were on there that we found that actually were done, you know, but we've also, they've also been picking on, but what you've been doing in the past is borrowing a million here, a million here, or two million this year, two million next year and just doing one piece. But you're getting to the point that you can't keep on piecemealing it.
I also seem to remember that on the lists that we were looking at between October and April, there was a, a year, a column for the year. And did that refer to the projected length of time that that would last? Or I forget just how, how you use that.
Well, we're looking at is when could we do it? And we're trying to figure out the, the best way to, to get it done and, what would I say? And spend the bond money, you know, within that three-year period. And we extended things out over a three-year period then because when we started this, there's a shortage of contractors and also a shortage of materials. That has seemed to go away right now. There's still a delay in getting certain amount of things, you know, like, you know, our, our fire pump had a fire and we had to put a temporary one in there. The new fire pump won't be there for six months, but the temporary, we can rent one for right away and within two weeks it's back there. And that's, by the way, that's covered by insurance, so it's not on us anymore, which is a good thing. But that was only six months where, you know, last year, things were talking up to two years to getting HVAC equipment. This year, there hasn't been much of a problem. It seemed like that supply chain issues have gone away.
No, but I mean, I seem to remember there was a column with like a plus fifteen, a plus ten, a plus five.
Oh, yeah. And anything under, that was a, it's life, life, yeah. Everything on here is over fifteen years.
Okay.
You know, and we, we, we're talking, and we'll get further into this in a, in a future meeting, but when we were talking to senior high school, we're debating about the seats there. The seats probably give us another ten years, but if we rip them up in ten years, well, we've been messing up before, we just did.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, that's a discussion the board will have to have down the next month or two.
Okay, thank you.
So my concern with the, with the turf field is, this isn't a wish list item, right? This, I mean, we have a turf field now. When it needs to be replaced, it's not like we can say, well, we'll just kick that can down the road. When it needs to be replaced, we're going to have to figure out a way to replace it. You know, we built this capital in place, you know, so that this way, you know, our taxpayers are paying that over essentially, you know, a, a little less than the life of some of these projects. I think it's what, thirteen years or something like that. What I, and, and we've seen the, the district's estimated projections of the amount of money it's going to take to continue to run the district if we're running it as it is today. You know, for some reason, you know, one to one-point-five million for that, how much is that new turf field? Is it a million?
I thought it was seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand.
If you're going to build a whole new field-
No, 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 I'm just-
Basically just replacing a turf.
Right, correct, so seven hundred-
Hate to say it, probably a hundred thousand as disposal fee for the old turf.
Right, so at seven hundred thousand dollars, I just want to make sure we're not going to be in a situation in five years where we're just going to tack three-quarters of a million dollars onto the end of our budget and that's going to affect us even more if we could look at it now.
And, and that's a good point and that's why John's here to go through the, the preliminary, because this is preliminary. This is what Quandell has identified for you. As I said, this is, this is a high-level view of what KCBA recommended and then them going back through the buildings and then, you know, what they discovered as far as things that either have been completed or things that have now come up that they need, like the, this senior high school with the HVAC system. You're, you're going to have to make decisions about moving forward with a project like the turf field because it doesn't need to be immediately replaced, but it will need to be replaced. It's the, it's the same situation with the high school auditorium. What John's presenting to you is, is doing the bare minimum of the high school auditorium and replacing the seats. But you're going to be in the same situation in another possibly ten to fifteen years with that auditorium because the seats will then start to fail and that's going to be an expenditure that whoever's on the board at that time will then need to tackle. Or you make the decision to fix the auditorium so it is fine for the next thirty years. So those are some of the things that you're, you're going to have to think through, like the turf, the seats, there, there's going to be some options that when they get a little bit further along in this process, that there will be, need to be decisions, but there's other things that just need to be done. You know, you need to have air conditioning, you, you need to fix the sidewalks because it's a safety concern, you need to fix treads on stairs, it's, you know, you don't want someone tripping. So, but that's why they're presenting the, the information to you so you can start thinking about that.
So I appreciate the clarity because that wasn't my understanding going into this. This looked to me like this was a presentation where we may be moving this forward and starting to make decisions about how we're going to spend this total package dollar amount that we want to borrow.
There, there's no numbers there yet, so that's why you're going to have to make some decisions.
Really, the last thing we're looking at is, you know, can this stuff be done within a three-year bond window, you know? And I think that's one of the things that Jamie was here last time. You have to make the decision, are you going to be able to do this stuff over the next two to three years or do you want to, you know, split the borrowing into two, you know? I think what we've gone through in availability could probably be done over the next two years easily with the majority being done next summer. You know, if you would have asked me this last year, I, I don't think you could have gotten contractors now. It seems like all of a sudden there's contractors available and equipments available. As they keep on going up the price.
So hypothetically, if we meet on September fifteenth to review scope and cost and we realize the cost for everything that we want to get done is over the bond amount that we're talking about approving for the parameters resolution, what, what would be our next steps?
You could actually do a new parameters resolution if you want to expand it.
Okay.
And, you know, the way we set up the restructuring, we'd just be adding a year. If you did another, you know, four million dollars, it'd be adding another year to pay off.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, that's what I want to do, but-
We set up the restructuring that you have that ability that you can tack on to the end. Or if you wanted to in, say, twenty, thirty, you know, all of a sudden we had a huge influx of students and you need out on the buildings, you could go out and borrow more money and, you know, extend it out. But, you know, as we were before, every time you borrow money, you're only, you're borrowing two million, otherwise you would have increased your payments.
Okay.
Because you were borrowing short at that time.
So at this month's voting meeting, we're going to vote on the parameters resolution as it is, assuming that it passes.
To start the process.
Yep. But if on September fifteenth, we, we see that the costs are greatly, or I, I don't want to say greatly, but just higher than what we anticipated.
Or, or you make the decision, hey, you know-
We can, we can approve of-
If we're ripping out the seats and putting them back, you know, and we're getting ten years, but we're going to have to take them out ten years.
So we could-
That's things you got to decide. I mean, the seats are in great shape, but-
Yeah, but we-
They won't be forever.
But in that scenario, we would be able to revise the parameters resolution that we originally approved and vote on a new one if we needed more capital.
Yeah, because we haven't gone out to the market yet.
No, you, you can revise it.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the timing of it.
I think they're talking going out to market in October, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Pretty tight.
And again, hypothetical, I'm just trying to understand different scenarios, like when we actually, I guess for me, I'm, I'm looking at a sheet and I see a number of things that talk about added scope and I'm, I don't see costs yet and I'm just getting a little nervous because I'd like to see what that is once, once it eventually gets there.
Or, or you, or you do two separate, you're one for the twenty million and if it's another four million, do that in January because you can't, you can't do them the same calendar year for the tax exemption, I think is what Jamie told us. Is that correct?
Right, well, there's benefits to splitting it up. And if you don't know, for instance, you haven't made up your minds by September, if you want to do a turf thing or the chair, or the, you know, chairs in the auditorium, you can do, you can break what you've already set up into a second part, add on a little more, but it counts as effectively the same transaction for borrowing purposes, which you, you're agreeing to. If we go that direction, we've already said yes, we will go that direction if we decide we need to.
So essentially, what's being presented to you are the, the high-level needs that we, you know, we need to have heat, we need to have air conditioning, we need to have functioning plumbing, we, we need to have generators. There's, you know, we don't want emergency vehicles getting stuck behind Reifton, which, you know, that's, that's a problem. But there's other things like, you know, Tim pointed out, that will need to be replaced. Turf, you know, like I just said, auditorium seats that, you know, are they immediate? No, but do they fit in a capital project? They do. But that is, that's where some decisions come into play. But these are the things that must get done. They, they absolutely must get done.
Once we have a better idea of final scope, cost, and we can kind of start to mold maybe not wishlist, as in we have never done it, but wishlist, as in this is going to need to be done anyway. I want to clarify that. This isn't a time to discuss a new turf field but are existing. I personally would like to see us have a, an extra meeting just to discuss this topic. I mean, this takes a long time to discuss. We have a big, you know, we, we tend to have larger agendas at these meetings and, you know, we're talking about spending twenty million dollars. I think it warrants having a, you know, more of a community forum where we can let people know that we're going to be looking at, you know, what this finally looks like and how we're going to spend it. And I think it's worthwhile having an extra meeting over it. That's just my thoughts.
Actually, we were thinking, I think if I'm right, the actual numbers will be in the middle of September and then maybe the end of September, we have a special capital projects meeting to go over the numbers and finish it off.
Yeah, I agree. We need, we need to see the numbers and have a good conversation about that.
I, I'm fine with doing an extra meeting. I, I do want to point out, we've, we, with our budget meetings, they were not well-attended and I just want to make sure that we're not making extra meetings just for the sake of making extra meetings. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with keeping them within our regular meetings that we do have now, but I'm happy to entertain a, a separate meeting if that's something that the board wants to do.
I just think that, I want to make sure that we give attention to everything on the agenda, whether, whether we get participation or not. You know, I don't want to get in a situation where we're working on a three- or a four-hour meeting and as a result, you know, I want to make sure that we can stay focused on all the things. And if this is going to monopolize our time, then maybe it should just be a carve-out.
I agree with Tim in that so much for me, it's not being worried as to whether more community members will come, as to me wanting to make sure I can focus only on that because that's, that's a meaty thing we need to not rush through, so I do agree.
We spent forty minutes just going over this and we hadn't had to make a decision. It's all, you know, when we're discussing expenditure of twenty million, it takes a little time and I don't think it's appropriate.
So the last slide, oops, is that the right way? Yeah. Very briefly, there we go. As we started with rebates a, a while back, there will be rebates that are possible with this project. We're doing some of the same kinds of things in, in a number of schools. Something since a, a year, right now, about a year ago, the investment, sorry, Inflation Reduction Act was passed and that introduced a, a very strange concept to public sector entities, that they could get the same kinds of tax credits in the same amounts for certain categories of things as private investors. So we're going to be looking at that. There's some interesting caveats. If you were building a new building and wanted to put a geothermal heat pump system, remember you have two buildings like that here in your district, fifty percent of the cost of that would be, and possibly more, there's some, it start, at least forty percent and if you're in certain income areas, there, I don't want to get in a lot of detail here. That would definitely put Sherry over the edge and probably everyone else. But the, so the question's going to be, if we're replacing equipment in a geothermal heat pump system, does that equipment allow this? That's a, if there's an accountant in the room, come and see me, but we have some folks that are going to be looking at that. So there may be some additional funds available that could come back to the district in addition to rebates. We'll be looking at that very, very specifically to see, see how much of those, how much of this act applies to the district here as we're renovating.
Would we know that by our meeting, when we get together, discuss that, this?
It, it's, there's a couple of moving parts. One is making sure whatever has been resolved and published by the federal government, so the IRS is making rules, those are being published in some cases weekly. Not everything is known. And the thing I'm talking about is probably going to need to be asked. I don't think this is the only school district that's, or entity that's going to have this question. If I have an existing system that normally would apply and I'm replacing part of it, will that be allowed? That's a pretty subtle thing as opposed to a whole new system that definitely would, would apply. So we're going to be working on that. I would say to be conservative with the timeline here, we may not know the answer to that, but we'll be continuing to work at it, whether or not that helps to nail down a decision. It would not apply to, say, auditorium seats or turf for sure, but it would apply to the geothermal- but it would apply to the geothermal heat pump system specifically.
Yeah. One thing I want to add on that is they're waiting for the IRS rules to come out because public entities like school districts do not pay taxes, so a tax credit doesn't do anything. And the way the Inflation Reduction Act was written, they'd actually give you a check back instead of giving you the tax credit. At least that's the way it's supposed to be, but the IRS hasn't come out with their final regs on it.
So that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to item B. I'm not sure who, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Item B is for the discussion of the bond parameters resolution. This is a continuation of the bond restructuring plan that was approved at the March twenty first board voting meeting.
That actually came over from Peter Ellman, our bond attorney. I think Sharon reviewed it. You didn't have any problems?
I have. Yep, no.
That's basically just saying they can start working on it.
Okay. Any discussion on this item before we move on? Okay, moving on to item C, bus cameras. At our last voting meeting, we had looked at basically a comparison between Fortress Mobile and Bus Patrol, and it was decided by the board that we were interested in seeing some additional quotes from vendors that we could purchase the equipment outright. The attached has the additional for, additional quotes for Surveillance Two Four Seven. There was actually another quote that had come in after the agenda was posted, which is from a business called REI. I think there was some handouts given on that. Their equipment and installation was actually much higher than the other two, priced out at about over two hundred and ten thousand, so I'm not sure if that's really going to be given any consideration to the discussion, but Mr. Feig did want to make sure that was handed out.
One thing I want to mention, Jason and I were talking about this. When you see all these different numbers on the cameras, what we asked for was basically making sure we have five cameras in each bus, the stop arms and the driver camera. Some buses have those, some do not, some have three cameras, some have two cameras, so it brings everyone up to the same, every bus up to the same amount of cameras, and also the, I don't want to call it the driver camera, but it's a stairway camera and a front and back stop arm camera. We also, on each one of these, would have a wireless connection at the bus garage to download the photos and store on our own servers, or not photos, the video. Right now, our systems are actually taking out little SD cards, which, you know, don't hold more than two days, so we have to pull them off right away to have information. They would not be accessible while the bus is driving, but when they pull into the maintenance garage, they'd be downloaded to our server from there. So I go point to point type thing.
Mr. Feig, can you tell us how many total bus units we have right now?
It'd be forty seven bus units.
Forty seven total?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think if we noticed.
And we have, I think our vans will have one on there. We're doing put stop arms on the vans.
Okay.
The van's thing doesn't come out.
Okay. So Fortress Mobile, and just kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Feig was saying, Fortress Mobile, you'll see the quantity that was quoted, there was forty seven, so that was for every bus.
Right.
But my understanding was that they were going to rip out any existing, sorry, any existing equipment and put in their own equipment.
Right, because theirs isn't compatible with what we already have.
Right, and then with Surveillance Two Four Seven, the quantity, I believe, is twenty three, so they're, what they're able to do is add their equipment onto any of the buses that do not have anything currently?
Correct.
Do we know the compatibility of the existing?
There are existing, existing vendor.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. So there's no issue then?
This would be upgrading all of our systems to the new wireless type.
Okay.
And I understand it right, savings of fifty thousand dollars compared to Fortress, correct?
Correct, and the savings of ninety, eighty or so to REI. Unless you still want to go with the Bus Patrol, which is basically a maintenance agreement each year and subtract out any possible funds.
What's the recommendation of the district?
Would be Surveillance Two Forty Seven.
And what are we budgeted for this year?
We have a hundred and forty, I think it's a hundred and thirty seven thousand for the replacement of the camera system.
So we stay under budget if we go with Surveillance?
Correct. Their annual maintenance is seventy five hundred. I think we had sixty five hundred in maintenance, so a little bit, you know, just increase our
Are we required to enroll in their annual maintenance? Is that a requirement of theirs if we go with their equipment?
No, it's separate, but.
Do we already do it now?
Yeah, we do it now.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious because it didn't seem like it actually covered a lot of the equipment, if I looked at that correctly. It was, it included like wiring repairs. It did say repairs the cameras, but then related to vandalism or physical abuse, it would not cover water, fire damage, so I guess just anything.
They dealt with schools.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
That's why we have all the insurance.
Things that could very well likely happen, but, okay.
And we're happy with Surveillance Twenty Two Forty Seven that we, you know, that we already work with them.
Happy with what we have. We're not happy with half the little SD cards and the very limited storage, plus we wanted to get the newer, better camera systems.
And they're able to provide them for us. So, I mean, I think it makes sense that we build on to our current system with Surveillance Two Forty Seven.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I, you know, Bus Patrol sounds great in theory, but I just do not feel good about going with that kind of agreement. And I think based on just the the lesser of costs that we need to do to upgrade the rest of the fleet to get them up to date, I just think it makes sense going with Surveillance to complete that work.
Do we have a sense of how many other districts have now or will have these, I know there's stairway cameras, I call them driver cameras, the ones that we, we have two of those, right? And it just so happened that the
Right, we have two of them.
The one where the assault occurred did have a camera.
All the buses have the aisle cameras, if you call that.
But do we have a sense of how many other districts have all of their buses loaded with the, behind the driver cameras?
The problem is a lot of districts will not put that out publicly because they're in the process of upgrading it.
Got it, alright.
So other districts would just have whatever their provider had, if they have it or not, right?
Right. And also, you got to think about it, we're, how many districts in Berks County have their own bus fleet anymore? Usually the private has more cameras than not because their insurance companies charging their premiums based on what kind of safety issues they have or coverage.
Any other discussion?
We had some objectors to this on the social media thing. And they're saying, well, we don't mean to run by the buses. Well, I didn't mean to crash aircraft when I shot down. The fact is, I would pay as much as we're paying right now to have my daughter back, or to protect your kids. And we were accused, both we and the township were accused of getting a cuts from the fines. I checked with Brian, we don't get a check. This is for the safety of our students, and I can't really fathom anyone objecting to it. And as I told him, if you can't see a great big yellow bus with flashing lights on it, maybe I ought to see your optometrist.
Just to clarify, with the new, the stop arm law that went into effect, I do believe districts can collect revenue.
I guess they can, but I have not seen anything come through. The only fines I get or have been getting is truancy fines.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that was the whole play by Bus Patrol, was that they were going to collect the fines and we were going to get, we were going to see a portion of that. But it would never overtake the technology fee that we had to pay every month.
Ben said, you know, when he talked to the districts, the biggest problem was getting a local police to co-op with them if you're caught on the fines.
Yeah.
This is a camera package, so the stop arm camera is just one part of the package. It's also the other cameras inside the bus. So, and that is known to the parents. We make sure that it's known and that there's audio, so you know, just for those of you who may not have been on the board at the time, when I was the principal, Lorraine, we almost had a student that was killed because someone did go through and when the stop arm was out and the student was exiting the bus, and it was a very close call. And to date, they were not able to find out
Red SUV, I remember, I recall that, yeah.
To find who was responsible for that, and that was, would have been a very tragic situation, so to Bob's point, you know, this is an added safety feature and, you know, people, it is the law that, you know, when a bus stops and that arm goes out and the lights are flashing, you are required to stop because students are exiting that bus, and that is somebody's child. You know, that needs to get home safely.
Yeah, and me, I'm definitely not looking this as a revenue generating opportunity for sure. This is simply about safety. And I think that's why we need to move forward with it. Would anyone object to us moving the Surveillance Two Four Seven proposals to the voting meeting then? And lastly, moving on to item D, this is to discuss the proposals for the custodial substitutes for contracting. Steve, can you come up briefly?
So I think the board looked at this last month. We talked about it. We put it out to a couple of other companies to see interest in bidding it. Most of the larger companies don't want to bid on a smaller contract due to the fact that it's not taking over the whole contract, so some chose not to bid. We had one company out of Lancaster that chose not to bid, and we had one other company that did bid. The pricing difference is less than five thousand between the two. The vendor that we originally presented is a local company employing local residents. So therefore, I would think that would be of keen interest for our school district as they are probably parents of students that attend. Other than that, we had two more persons, which you named tonight, that are retiring before the end of September, and we know we have another two coming up shortly after. So the need is dire.
And this is really substitutes, so we do have coverage during the day for our buildings.
Correct, for events.
It's not replacing any existing position. It's for substitutes. We contract out for substitutes for nurses, for teachers, other areas, so that's what we're looking at. And we tried for years to hire substitutes and custodians. We haven't even been able to fill the regular custodians, let alone substitutes.
And what is our substitute budget for custodians?
About two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And that's just custodians? That is not inclusive of nurses and teachers?
No, that's just custo, that's support staff substitutes, and the only ones we actually put substitutes in are custodians, or try to.
It's approximately two seventy, you said?
Yeah.
I personally don't have an issue moving forward with this and using a local service. My ask would be that we would include in the motion that when we max out our budgeted allowance, that they, that we, that the district would have to come back to the board to seek additional monies moved forward.
Which I doubt will max out because we're only using them nine and a half months.
It's a nine and a half month usage, and it would be dependent, it's only for one year, for us to see how it goes and make sure that we can sustain throughout the retirement bubble that we're hitting now.
I guess in addition to this, sort of relevant, but what what is the plan to rehire or get custodians in then? How do we transition them in on top of using this service as well? Does this taper off eventually?
Diane?
Yes, we currently have postings on our website and on Frontline, and we are currently trying to recruit every day for custodians. We've just had the three retirements come through that we were anticipating but not at this moment. We have another two that we know are coming for next year, so we are continually looking for custodians. We're going to be having a job fair probably in the fall, late fall, to try and get some more support staff help as well.
Have we had applications in?
Yes, we do have a few. Not many, but the other option is to try another service like Indeed. We had some success with them. Probably about two years ago, we had a little bit of success with that agency. We're also going to try, like I said, do a job fair. We're also planning a job fair in late September possibly for bus drivers, because we're short on bus drivers as well.
Let's see, could you tell me what the typical hourly rate is for a custodian that we're looking for?
Yeah, currently, right now, it's thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. If they work a second shift or mid-shift, there's an extra twenty five cent shift differential.
Thank you.
Plus benefits.
Thank you.
And opportunities for overtime, I would assume, as well?
Yes, there is always opportunity for overtime. As you know, our buildings are running constantly. We have activities in every building daily, especially the high school and junior high. They have evening activities and weekend activities. There's always a custodian on duty for that. Plus, we also have our building checks. On holidays and weekends, we have custodians come in and check our buildings for security purposes.
Do we know if anyone else in the county, or any other district in the county is having this issue?
I know several districts that actually have contracted out part of their workforce because they have failed to find custodians or the help. I know a couple of our neighboring districts use substitute services to fill in for both cafeteria, custodian, secretaries. Never have luck with teacher substitutes for Exeter because they've already, you know, they don't take on new substitute services because they're having a hard time filling their regular clients too.
So if we do happen to hire, by the, by just pure chance, we happen to hire four custodians in two months, are we saying then we're able to drop this agreement, or?
It's not just, when I look at substitutes, I'm just trying to make sure we have coverage. We're trying to get substitutes to take over for when people call in sick or take vacation, because with the benefits, they also get sick days, they get vacation days. With forty some people, we probably have five to seven people out every day.
It's, during the school year, it can range between eight and fifteen, depending, and if it's inclement weather, it can be much higher.
But with sick time, I mean, we're saying that we're on the hook for twenty seven thousand dollars for just the chance of somebody calling out sick, though, right? We're not, this isn't a pay as is, this is guaranteed pay.
We haven't been able to find substitutes to cover those. We're, we've, haven't been able to find substitutes to cover those people. So when we have two or three, like in elementary, if we have two people out in one building, you know, that day, we're only picking up trash because we're not washing the floors because we don't have the people to be able to clean the full building. So we're trying to make sure we get the essentials done before we get the, you know. Lorraine, you have, what, two people in the night?
You, you, you have one that works a mid-shift from twelve to eight, and then one employee is there by herself till eleven. And that's usually common with Jackson Wald, Waden, and Lorraine.
So if that person calls sick, we're pulling someone from another building, just go over there, get the trash, you know, that clean. But the floors aren't being washed that night. The next night, we're probably bringing someone over from a different building to wash the floors and get the trash, you know. But then the other building is not being completely clean.
I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how many custodians do we need to hire to not have to use the service anymore?
I'd say probably six more.
Six.
Because we can, you, I think you gave us sheets last time on how many people are out.
I, I did. And, and the, the real crux of the issue is, it's not just one-sided or, or it's just not just one issue. What happens is when you, when you have guaranteed people that are leaving, that are retiring, and you know you're going to have guaranteed people that may be out injured, may be out for bereavement, whatever the case may be, then you throw in sick time along with that.
Sure, yeah.
It's a struggle to maintain what you have. And we just cannot replace them fast enough. When we hire, and I'll give you a, for instance, last year, I think I hired 12 different people. And I think my percentage was, of people that actually stayed, was maybe 50%. So until you get them in, get their clearances, get them trained and acclimated into the position.
Yeah.
And then you lose those people because they can find a job that's better paying somewhere else. And that's generally what younger folks are looking for, is what's in their pocket. It's not generally, they're not thinking along the terms of, you know, I'm going to have a prescription plan or benefits. They're going to be looking at it as to what.
Pure money salary.
Right. So your, your competition level is, is difficult. Having those four individuals that you know you're going to have every day because they're contractually obligated to be here gives us some leeway in the fact of if we have someone who's injured, if someone's out on call out, we can continue to function and not have the building suffer as a result of that.
Mr. Mall, looks, it looks like to me though, from here, that we're only on the hook for the month, not for the year.
Yeah, this is month to month, from what I'm understanding. I guess my, from my scenario is we're, we're going to continue to pay this month to month until we actually have the resources to not need the service anymore. So that's, that's what I'm questioning is like, when, when is it that we can not need the service to supplement our existing custodial staff?
And that's why, again, why I'd ask that it be put into the motion that, you know, we don't maxim, you know, that if we get past what we're budget allowed, that we have to come, they, you know, they would have to revisit this.
Yeah, e- e- either, either a, a budget cap or a timeline, I would, I would.
Yeah, one or the other would be fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would definitely be in favor of something like that to, to make sure we revisit this.
In my opinion, when you look at it, we have five maintenance people for eight buildings. We, we have 35 custodians for seven occupied buildings and one bus garage. And you're trying to move them around. And I'm just not sure when the number of custodians was established, long before I came.
Yeah.
And since then, we've grown. So if you're growing and you're adding new areas, which is great for the school district, it also means more time cleaning. If you have a stadium that needs to be maintained after every football game, and you have things that are, events that are, you know, in the 4,000 range, you're also looking at more demand on your personnel. So what happens is generally, the folks that have been here for a long time get burnt out. They don't want to work overtime. You know, it's just a whole line of things that are causing this issue and the need for us to do something immediately to try to correct the position.
Yeah.
Which union represents our custodians?
It's the Support Union.
Yeah, that's the ESPA, Support Staff Union.
Yeah. And from, I believe our last meeting, this was not in, doing this was not in violation of that union agreement?
I'm not worried about that. I wonder when their contract's opening up.
Twenty twenty-five, I believe.
And, and there are things that, you know, looking at the contract, because I came in after the last one, it was ratified, that we could put in there to make the job more appealing for, for folks. One of the most common things I hear from the staff all the time is, well, I'm getting paid the same, you know, this guy's making the same as me and I just, he just came off the street. Well, that's not something I can do anything about because there's a union contract and you're contractually bound by that. But there are incentive programs that we could into it, into the contract to, to try to make it more appealing for people to come on board and stay with us for longer periods of time. And, and there's also things we could do to control the amount of folks that are, you know, taking a lot of sick time or, or those things that could be put into the contract. But really, none of that can be solved for two years. So as a stopgap measure, I think we need to do something immediately. And then we need to really sharpen our pencils about what we want to perceive to be in the next contract for the support staff. So that we can work on it as a twofold proposition, not just raising salaries to try to be competitive with other districts, but also looking at what we offer and ways to incentivize more productivity in attendance.
I won't be here, but I recommend that you make that list and present it to the negotiation team. And because I think something should be done on that.
So I would just ask if, for this item, as it goes to the voting meeting, if we, assuming we are going to go with this proposal for made to be clean, would the board, or would anyone on the board have any opposition to say that the agreement is, we only agree to do a month to month contract or for the duration of the 2023, 24 school year? Would that be something that you, you would be willing, Mr. Morgan, when we're talking about time limits?
That would be nine months, correct?
Right.
So that would put us adjusted budget.
Yeah. It is basically what we're paying our current employees.
Well, the other thing is you got to make sure they can provide what they're saying they're going to too.
You're correct, yeah. I mean, obviously, if there's any service.
It's all that cancellation.
Yeah.
And that's part of the reason why we pursued it in this manner and why a lot of larger companies don't want to, because they want guaranteed increments of contract time to make it worth their while. And we kind of want to test the waters and see if, if there's a way we can make the mix work better so that it doesn't cause any problems internally, but also provides the coverage that we need in order to keep the school district functioning as we transition.
Yeah. And obviously, as this being month to month, I think we would also want to be aware of any rate increases that would also need to come back to the board as well if that, if that occurs. So, yeah. So I would say there's a few stipulations there.
Yeah, I just think it, you know, it could be subject to change, right? Because if in two months, you come back to us and say, we had another three people leave and we need to increase the amount of, you know what I mean? We, we really have to be careful and look into this as to how much we're spending. Either way, though, I think we should be having quarterly updates about these crisis employment situations that we're having, whether it be bus drivers or, or custodial staff or whoever the case may be.
Yeah. It really runs the gamut across all support staff. It's food services, bus, custodial maintenance grounds. It's, it's a struggle. And it's not just this district.
Right, yeah. It's a struggle with, with many districts. When we go to our job alike meetings at the IU, we have, you know, a whole, a full HR team from the other districts and we all have the same, the same issue.
Understood. I think that our struggle though is that we have to, you know, we approve the budget and we have to stick to it. So if we have these quarterly discussions, we can at least hear from, from Brian, you know, how much we've saved in, unfortunately, in the loss of employment versus how much we're budgeted, budgeted for, for agency.
Yeah.
And then we can maximize as much as we can to help you. However, you know, we're still obligated to, you know, to the budget we approved.
Any other discussion on this? Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. And thank you, Steve. Personnel, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. So we have three things up for discussion, all to be moved to the voting meeting. A, appointments, which it looks like there are three attached lists. B, a market wage adjustment. And C, the attached list of course requests. Would there be any discussion on any of them? Dr. Herring, I will quickly turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Dr. Hamburger, Policy Committee.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. We have, as you can see, we have several policies that are recommended for first reading. Some of these policies are revisions. The ones that are revisions are 137 and 137.1. These are revisions to existing policies. And then there's the introduction of some new policies that are the remaining, you know, policies listed in the agenda. And for the, for the first policies have to do with home education students. And then the final policy, it has to do with our programming for trauma-informed approach, approaches in the schools. But what I'll do is I'll let Mrs. Harris, as usual, give us a little bit of background and explanation in terms of, you know, what these policies mean for us and, and answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. So there have been some changes to school code with regards to home education or what we also sometimes call homeschooling. And so as a result of that, the policies have been updated. But the recommendation has also been to break out what has been the main policy, 137, around home education into some additional subpolicies. And that's why you see the addition of those couple new policies on the agenda. And they relate to participation of home education students in career and technical education programs, in extracurricular activities, and in co-curricular and academic activities. In terms of big changes to the school code, by the way, home education experienced a revival during the pandemic. A lot of families opted for home education during the pandemic for safety and health and wellness reasons. And so that really spurred a lot of conversation around home education in Pennsylvania and a lot of the practices. And that was really a lot of the impetus for some of these changes. But so changes include districts being more accountable for prioritizing home education students in the same way that they prioritize on-campus students for access to extracurricular activities and access to academic activities on campus. Homeschool students may now attend academic courses for up to 25% of the school day on campus. And again, they are being prioritized in the same way that on-campus students are with regard to access to those programs. Same thing with BCTC and career and technical education programs. The onus is on the district to prioritize having a process to make sure that home education families have the same level of ability to apply for those slots at the career and technical education program. And that we help the homeschool families facilitate that the same way we facilitate for on-campus students. In addition to that, special education students may attend special education classes that are actual classes that are in the course catalog. So that opens up home education students to be able to participate in something like a learning support math class at the high school if it's rostered as an actual class. And then in addition to that, it also clarifies some responsibilities for families who are homeschooling and creates some forms for them to have better communication with the district. It clarifies parent, parental responsibilities around completing the home education evaluation each year. If you don't know, students, families that are homeschooling are required to complete an evaluation of the student's homeschooling program and submit that to the school. That comes to my office. My office is sort of the compliance officer moni- monitor for all of that. And we're in charge of making sure that our homeschooling families are in compliance with submitting those documents. So there were some administrative regulations that we updated with regard to these policies as well. And when these policies are approved, you'll see them as forward-facing ARs that the community has access to because that's where those forms are that I was referencing. Mr. Fiddler, because I know you usually ask me about some numbers. I did want to just kind of give you an idea of where we're at in terms of the number of home education students that we have. Pre-COVID, our numbers were around 50 or 60 students. During COVID, we actually doubled in numbers. Then after COVID, we dropped in number, but not back to pre-COVID numbers. So this past school year, we were around 85 homeschooling students in total. Just to give you an idea of enrollment in that. And then the other new policy that we have is our trauma-informed approach policy. This one's been a little bit of time in the making because we wanted to get it right. This is very important and integral to what we do in terms of helping to remove barriers for students to be able to access their education. So it's really centered around our philosophy of providing social and emotional wellness and supports to students so that they are then free to access their learning in an optimal kind of way. There were changes around school code, as you've heard us talk about many, many times, related to school safety back in 2018. And as a result of that, schools are expected to have a trauma-informed approach policy. To the point that if we want to continue to apply for many of those grants that we get around school safety and mental health, we have to have this policy in place. In addition to the policy, schools are also recommended to have a trauma-informed approach plan. And in a minute, I'm going to ask Mrs. Leonard to come up. We're going to put it on the screen and just talk to you a little bit about that. But I, I think I had talked to the board about our, our trauma-informed approach plan when I did my goals update with you in June. And it's since undergone more revision. Where it hasn't gotten to yet is the workshop of Jen Breton. So it is that plain PDF version right now. But that's where it will go to next is to Jen. And then we will be training staff on that model and that plan. And then we'll be making it available on our website as a resource for families. But essentially, it's a tiered intervention model, just like we utilize for our literacy or academic interventions. So it basically lays out what types of trauma-informed approaches and supports and services we have in the district and goes from that ground level of universal support right all the way up through the most intensive kinds of supports. All right, Mrs. Leonard, I probably stole your entire show. Didn't I just say, I apologize. But if you want to come up to the mic and have Sheldon in the closet put it up, I'll let you talk a little bit too.
As, as she's coming up, for these home education programs, obviously, there's a lot more clarity here, a lot more visibility for our families. How much more of a shift is this for us? In other words, if, if a homeschooled family had called you last year and asked for any of these services, are we already providing them to families that would ask?
So this is the good news part of it, is this is one of those areas where we were ahead of the policy revisions on these types of things. A lot of these things that are codified in these policies really were things that were best practices that you should be doing with your homeschooling families. So for example, this district has had homeschooling families, families who have accessed career and technical education programs with our assistance previously. So, yeah, I think the big change is, like I said, clarity around forms, clarity around process, and clarity around accountability.
So she did say basically what I was going to say. So it's, but it's not pretty at all. And it's, we're actually thinking about making the tiers, maybe even a tier for K through fourth or K through sixth, and then seventh through twelfth, kind of break them apart a little bit even more on what you would be doing, you know, K through four as a universal screener. What programs would actually be there that are trauma-informed. And then maybe a fifth through sixth that's like that, and then a seventh through twelfth that's like that. Because they are very different. And we had a lot of feedback from the teams at our workshops on what they thought should be on there, what they thought shouldn't be on there, and the different wording that we used. And so I'm, I'm really excited because I do feel like it's a good layout we have now. And we forgot things. And so the, the collaboration with all the different admin and everybody else really helped. So I feel like we have everything on there. It's So I feel like we have everything on there, it's just now a matter of making sure that, should we keep it all together? Did we miss any, you know, any facilitators? And are we actually doing all of these things? Um, and we pretty, we feel like we are, but this will be a good way to keep track that we are.
For either one of you, what, what was the need for trauma-informed policies, procedures, programs, controls, whatever you want to call them, say, 25 years ago, 15 years ago, pre-COVID, during COVID, and now? I mean, when I went to school here, uh, the only trauma I was aware of was the paddle that some of our coaches used for discipline inflicting trauma on students. Now it seems that our students are coming to school with, uh, a whole variety of traumas that we must now address. When, when did that start?
So, um, the impetus for, like, the formal conversations around trauma-informed approaches in education in public schools really did come out of that Act 44 of 2018, so it was pre-COVID. Um, and it was coming out of a lot of the changes that were related to school safety that were discussed as a result of multiple school shootings and school violence. So that was where a lot of the formality came from. Did kids have trauma when I went to school and when you went to school? They did. Wasn't something that was talked about, like, a lot of things. Um, and people weren't well-educated on it, and there wasn't a lot of research being done in relation to how that relates to academic performance and academic achievement. Um, and there, there has been now a lot of research done on adverse childhood experiences. You'll often hear that called ACES. Um, and the impact that, that has on brain development, actual cognitive development, brain formation, and how that impacts someone all the way throughout their life. Um, and so as part of that research, you know, that's been incorporated into what schools are doing in terms of making sure that our students, if they're not coming to us ready to learn, what are the supports and services that we can put in place to help remove some of that barrier for them so that they can learn in the classroom and be safe and be well?
It is recent.
Yeah.
2018.
The formality of it, yes.
Thank you.
And, um, so it's part of all of that conversation around mental health. Um, and you know that we've been getting grants around mental health funding and school safety funding and all of that. But it is something that is becoming increasingly more mandated. It's one of those things that falls on that very long list of, okay, schools, now you're mandated to address this through both training and resources and all of those kinds of things.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris. Anyone have any, uh, any other additional questions regarding the, the policies that are, uh, proposed for first reading for the voting meeting? Okay. Well, then I think, uh, we're recommending that these policies be placed on the agenda, and that's all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. No one has signed up for public comment, so we're going to be moving the following items to our August 15 voting meeting. Meeting minutes. Item 3A, B, C, D, and E. Item 4B, C as written. D as written with the addition of, uh, with a month-to-month contract for the 23-24 school year. Items A, uh, 5A, B, C. Item 6A. That's everything on that. At this point, are there any board members that would like to be heard?
I brought up the, um, redesign or installing a different sign to give directions on people coming to our school district a few months ago. It wasn't my, uh, brainstorm, it came from one of our residents. And, uh, he has expanded his request since we didn't move fast enough. He has expanded his request, and he's gone out on social media, several social media platforms. And, uh, so although we might want to ignore it, uh, I think we have to look into it at least. And I, uh, talked to the guy, and he and I came up with, uh, an idea. If we cannot get it on a post out there, perhaps we can go to our ex-tax collector's son who has an office right there on the corner and get permission to install a small, small sign there. So, uh, and I'd be willing to talk to him, too.
Could, and, uh, Mr. Quinter, can you, can you expand on that? Is, is it PennDOT that rejected the signage?
If we can't get anything which satisfies this board and does what it is intended to do, then perhaps we can create the sign and negotiate with the corner lot there to put it on the corner lot.
Right, but I, I didn't think the, the holdup was this board, I didn't think anyone was objecting.
It's not this board that's holding it up. The, uh, design which we presented did not conform with state, uh.
And that was PennDOT that was, PennDOT rejected it.
Yes.
Yeah.
If I can jump in with a little bit of clarity.
Yes, please.
We didn't ignore it. We, we did address it. And, and administration did research it for us, and yes, it stopped with PennDOT showing no interest. Uh, but you're saying you'd like to, to.
Oh, I'm going to press along.
Okay, hey, carry on.
I'll call the governor or something, I don't know.
All right, awesome.
I have.
Thank you, Mr. Quinter.
Two quick things. First one, just a reminder to the public, you know, especially as it gets time for the new school year, tend to see some, some comments coming up on social media. Sometimes we talk about different topics, we see a lot on social media. Jen Breton has done everything in her power to make us accessible at the click of a button. Um, and we always announce when our meetings are. It's very important that if the public has questions or concerns about anything that we do here, that you reach out to a board member via email, that you reach out to the administration, that you come to a meeting where you can feel free to speak your mind. However, I can, I, I won't speak for the whole board, but I do not use social media as an, as a, as a way to make informed decisions. So I just, you know, want to remind everyone that it's so important that you talk to us or come to a meeting or speak to administration. Thank you for that. And then the second thing is, I just wanted to enter a meeting on a high note, and maybe Mr. Feig could give us a quick rundown of how our state is doing with providing us our budget. Since we provided it for them, I believe, in a timely fashion. I, I'm getting optimistic from my legislative committee that they might come back in earlier. Right now, they're scheduled to come back in September 18th. But I, I'm hearing that they might come back earlier to finish up the, the finalization. I don't think there's any rejection of what they put in the budget, it's just some bickering on.
It's the school vouchers.
The school vouchers.
The $100 million school voucher, I think, is what they're still bickering about. Yeah, but I, I heard the same thing, Brian.
They are telling us so to make sure, you know, the, the, uh, food funds, the USDA, that's separate, so that money will still be flowing. So start of the school year, there'll be free breakfast for everyone, and the kiddos that used to be reduced are now free. You know, but there's still, you know, regular students will be paying for, for lunches, but there will be free breakfast. You know, I, I feel sorry for a lot of districts that do not have a strong tax base because there's districts out there that are actually going to have to borrow money to be able to open schools, to be able to make payroll.
And, and that's not us, right?
That's not us.
Thank you.
That, that's the good news when you're 70% supported local, but there's districts out there 80% supported state, and they're not going to be able to meet payroll in September.
All right.
And the worst part is this, the, the way the state law is written, they guarantee, the state will guarantee any debt issued by municipalities and school districts, but I think they have a cap on the interest rate of like 5.5% and rates keep on going up. So it's, a lot of banks are afraid to, to do a low rate.
They, they are not interested in, in doing temporary transition notes. That, I have worked with districts that, that can't get anybody to buy their short-term.
Tax, taxes.
Nope.
Yep, okay.
It's horrible.
I have one question, if I may, for, for Dr. Howler. Uh, as we all know, six months ago, there was an incident on one of our buses. It's now, six months later, a, a status hearing has been postponed five times. And I just looked on the website today, it's been postponed again until September. Do you have any insight as to where the case stands, or we just have to watch the, watch the calendar?
No, that's, that's out of our hands, so you, you just have to watch the calendar.
Good enough, thank you.
All right. Um, if nothing else, following this meeting, the board will meet for an executive session to discuss privileged information with the solicitor. Our next board meeting will be our Tuesday, August 15th voting meeting. Hearing no objections.